At 7:22, we met with legal counsel earlier and we're just getting the meeting started now. First on the agenda, at 7 o'clock, we have our number of requests for appointments to the Kingston Days Committee and recently adopted practice, we'd like everybody to, any appointees, irregardless of what board it is, we request them to come in, for those to give us the benefit of the people we don't know, introduce yourself to the board, tell us briefly where you live, how long you've been in town, if you live in town, if you live out of town, whatever, and if the board has any questions, be able to field those questions for us. So, why don't we start with...
Seems that there are some...
Who wants to go first?
I can go first.
What's your name, sir?
My name's Joe Schmidtlein.
Okay, Joe, just speak right into that microphone for me. Would you introduce yourself?
Sure. My name's Joe Schmidtlein. I've been a resident of Kingston since about 85.
Where do you live?
5 Bob White Drive.
Thank you. You currently on, have you served on the committee before?
I was involved with the 325th Committee, so I am new to the Kingston Days Committee.
Okay.
What'd you do with the 325th?
I did their website and I did the Facebook page and then I helped out a lot during the event itself.
Okay. Are you retired?
Don't I wish. No. Soon, I hope.
Who recruited you?
Oh, Lynn.
Who?
Lynn Gately.
Lynn's no longer with us. She's moved out of town, you're aware of that, I'm sure.
Yep, yep.
Does anybody have any questions for Joe?
Have you done anything in town before?
No. This was my...
Welcome aboard!
Thank you. I'm glad to hear you say that.
We appreciate your volunteering. It's tough these days to get volunteers and...
I'll make a motion to approve the gentleman for the Kingston Days Committee.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of appointing Joe to the Kingston Days Committee for a term to, it's a one-year term?
That's fine, yep.
November 30th, it will expire November 30th, 2020. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Alright, Joe, we're gonna sign your appointment sheet and if you could take it and go downstairs and see Tammy Vakey, the Town Clerk Tax Collector, and she can get you sworn in after we sign it, okay?
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
You're next.
This'll be the third sworn in today.
Okay, Charlotte.
Tell us about yourself.
Don't even go there. Ask Philip about me. Ask Donna about me. Ask everybody about me.
Charlotte, how long have you been on the Kingston Days Committee?
Five years, I think. I'm the treasurer for the Kingston Days Committee for five years.
Yeah. I thought you were on longer, actually.
Probably.
How long have you lived in town?
To do the track to get on these things so long.
How long have you lived in town, Charlotte?
Well, believe it or not, it'll be 40 years this Christmas.
Forty years, wow.
Forty years.
This Christmas?
Around Christmas time, we moved into where we are now.
Yeah. Charlotte's been around town, we've seen her at the elections and everything else, on multiple, or has been on multiple committees and volunteered and worked for the town. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Charlotte Putin to the Kingston Days Committee.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's for a term that it appears to expire November 30th, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Briggs was a little slow in his aye. Did you notice that?
But he gets things done for me when I need them, right, Mark?
There you go. Thank you for all you do.
You're welcome.
So again, we'll give you, you gave that to Joe?
Yep.
Appointment paper. And you can go down and see Mrs. Vakey.
I still want the others to come in. Should I see if they can come next time? I thought they were all going to be here, but...
Anybody else? Anne Marie Roth? No.
She's not on the Budget Committee. She just came to us last week.
That was Kim.
And I know the name, but I can't remember her.
You she did.
Kim Donahue, that was Kim.
Oh, did she not come? Alright, she's on the Budget Committee.
This is Louis and Anne Marie Roth.
So, yeah, they're not here, so you can sign Kim's at least, because she was a...
Kim was just here a couple of weeks ago for the...
And then Victoria Hayes?
I'll make a motion to approve Kim Donahue, considering she was just here, very recent to Kingston, but looking to get involved in town.
Somebody want to second that? Okay, we got a motion and a second to appoint Kim Donahue. Again, the term expires November 30th, 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Can you reach out to her? Let her know appointment papers are here and if you could come in and have it get sworn in from Town Clerk. I'll leave the other ones in here. Okay, on this thing from, we still haven't heard back from Foye Insurance?
No, she hasn't had it yet.
Has this got a deadline?
I think there's still time. I think it's the end of the year, but it's...
Okay, we asked her to reach out to them one more time, and if they still don't respond, we're gonna take it as they're not interested in submitting. We got a letter here for a, this was a thank you letter from the board that I asked Susan to write, was for Bill Bixby. Received your letter of resignation for the Fire Station Building Committee. Well, we're sorry to hear it. Would like to join the committee in thanking you for your dedication over the last year and a half and your contributions of time and knowledge. Volunteers especially for such a time. Intensive committee such as this has been, are not always easy to come by. We truly appreciate your help. How you doing?
Good, thanks.
We had an opportunity to have, Susan spoke to our building inspector, took a look at some of the information in the file.
We do see that, I think it, first of all, calls out the card as a two-family. We recognize
that there was, and I don't think we were, weren't able to find a building permit for the additional bedroom that was added, or any of the work in the upstairs garage.
There's no building permits in the file.
Okay, so we assume that work was done illegally. It did, we, the assessor did pick it up on the card, recognizing that there was living space up there. It's taxed as a two-family. And in that zone, it isn't, a three-family wouldn't be permitted in the current zoning? So it's non-conforming. So yes, it is picked up on the tax card, the existing conditions of the property, but that doesn't legitimize something that has been added illegally.
Okay, so it was added illegally in excess of 20 years. We agree to that?
We don't know when it was put in there.
It was picked up on the tax card 20-something years ago. It's been being taxed as a finished, as an apartment above the garage for...
Well, the property's being taxed as a two-family.
On the first card, it's being taxed as a two-family. On the second card, it's being taxed as the apartment above the garage.
Well, there's two cards. There's two cards. The first one is the description of the property. When there's an accessory building, it generates the second card. That doesn't mean it's a separate...
It's a separate space that's being taxed as a finished space above the garage. It's noted on the, on all the information that I brought to your attention last week. It was, and I know that none of the members are, were in, on the board when the septic was pulled, but it's, have you reviewed the application for construction?
Uh, I don't know.
So if the information that we're going off of is solely the building inspector that has a separate issue with me, then we probably have a bigger problem. Because all the paperwork, if we only reviewed his comments, then we haven't done, the board hasn't done its due diligence, and I'm not trying to insult you or say anything negative, but if we just go off the building inspector, what he says, when he denied me a permit for 6 Spruce Lane to put windows and doors on my own property, and I fought him on it, and he had to give me my permit ever since then, I'm gonna have a conflict with the building inspector, not that I choose to. I just wanted to secure my property. I'm redeveloping that property into something very nice. And this all came about, these notes from the building inspector that are in the jacket, came about after that argument I had with him. That's when he started picking in. So then I would say, all these years it's being taxed, it's picked up by the selectmen on a permit for septic, approved for three units, each unit with one-bedroom apartment totaling 675 gallons per PPD. Why did, at that time, why hasn't the building department or the selectmen picked up and said 20 years ago, 15, 10, nine years ago, there's an illegal dwelling here? They, this town has never taken action, and I bought this property with this information. It's never been disputed until I had an argument with Robert. So I have to ask, how did it get by everybody on the board, on the previous board, and the building inspector, how many were in effect during this time?
Can I ask you, in December of 15, did he tell you you should go to seek a variance from the zoning board?
No.
He didn't?
For?
When you were doing, you pulled a permit for garage door work?
I, the garage doors were in disrepair and I closed off one, and I put in a fake, I just put in a wall to keep the drafts out, to keep the pipes from freezing.
Okay.
He didn't ask me to pull a variance, to go for a variance for anything. Did he document that and tell you that?
Since he sent a card in the note. Says he sent you a card.
He sent me a card? Do we have a copy of that?
Just his note that he sent a card.
But we don't have a copy of the note, or certified letter, or anything like that that shows that he sent that, because he did not.
Okay, so what Mark was saying is, three families aren't allowed in the rural residential zone. So when it did come to his attention, when you were doing the garage door work, he said that he's requested that you seek a variance with the ZBA.
He did not, and there's nothing in writing to that effect. So if we can't really take, we can't just take word, any town would have sent a certified letter with a document that was validated to the homeowner. Seen them before. I've seen them with properties I've managed or fixed for other people. There's a notice sent, a certified letter sent with a document that's in the file, which we don't have here.
Well, and I don't, without having him here, I can't speak to how it went down, but probably what happens most of the time is, he'll say, "That's not an approved use. You probably have to go to the ZBA to get that approved." It's not a certified letter or anything like that. It's an informational thing to you as the homeowner.
So we're gonna, we're gonna deviate from every document that we have in the jacket, with all due respect. We're gonna deviate from every document that you have from the town and trust that the building inspector, four years ago, without documenting it, sent me this note. Everything here states different.
What do you have right in front of you? I wasn't here last week.
I would love to share these documents with you. Instead of having to go through the whole jacket, I have the important ones here, if you wanna look at them. Can I bring them around?
Please.
Feel free to look at all the documents, but these are really the telling tales, because this says it's a three-apartment, and it was, selectmen was right there. Says selectmen, the board of selectmen. So why at that time was that certified letter, something sent to the owner, registered that you have to remove this apartment?
Are you renting the apartment?
Yes.
I think that's the difference, because back along, it said finished space. Back in one of the old cards, it says apartment.
On one of them, it does say, one of them that goes way back says it was owner's use, yes.
For owner's use.
Yeah, it does say that, on one of the documents.
Not renting it, I think that's when you get into...
But it's been rented from the previous owner. It's been rented for 12, 13...
We don't have a record.
Do you know the previous owner's name?
Petrie. Jennifer and Jeff Petrie.
Right of that, it was Piggin's. Originally, the master was Frank Murphy, who was the building inspector, who created two apartments in the home, and it wasn't done correctly, I guess.
I recall you stating that last week.
Then sometime later, I think, I think under Jennifer, they created that, that place over the garage.
So the town is aware that they created it, right?
I don't know about them. I, on a different role, I went there for police-related issues.
Right. And now it's a nice stabilized, nice quiet property, right? And it's been, you know, it's been cleaned up, painted, new pavement. It's a nice, nice little property.
I don't know, I haven't been there in a few years.
At no time have I been notified that this apartment is illegal and I should move out to tenants. And the other thing is, again, they pulled, the electrician pulled a permit to put three meters and a public meter in, two, three years ago. How come all of these things happened and nothing flagged the town? That, wait, we gotta put an end to this. Why would I have four meters there if I wasn't renting it?
Inspector love, attorney's oath.
Yes. It was signed off.
By the electrical inspector.
Yes. We pulled permits and did it, we did everything with the inspectors approved. So it's more than just, you know, 25 years ago, the, from what I understand, an old inspector built it, or did whatever.
I think it was longer ago than that.
Maybe, but it's bigger than that. It's bigger than, that it's not in the right zone. All this paperwork clearly states three apartments, and nobody ever made an action, which means that the town, in my eyes, sees it as they're displaying it on the paperwork. I mean, you've denied an abatement based on, the assessors based it on the comps, and he comped it as a three, three-unit building, and two separate buildings, three units. The septic came before the selectmen in '02-ish, whenever that was. They approved it with three apartments, and I understand your point, and I understand the zoning.
The health officer, went to the health officer, the septic design.
But it was also, it says selectmen on the paper, so the selectmen had to approve it, or had to see it. And at that time, why didn't the selectmen on...
Selectmen typically don't approve septic systems.
But they are aware that it's happening, and they get a copy of it, and it says, "Word of selectmen," so it doesn't say it because they don't get to look at it. They get to look at it.
There was an '02?
'02-ish. It's on the paperwork.
Can you remember?
And I'm not trying to change something to get an extra unit for myself. I bought it with this information that says three apartments and two buildings, and only recently has the, this, that paper been generated with all the notes about the property by Robert. That was done a couple of weeks ago.
It was a single family, then it was changed over by Frank Murphy to two.
When did you purchase it?
15.
So you're the one that put the meters in, right?
Yes.
Didn't have separate meters. Why would that be if it was three separate units?
Why's that?
Why would it be, why wouldn't it have had separate meters if it was designed to be three separate units?
It had, it had more than one meter, but it didn't have...
I mean, it had two, right?
It may have had two or three. I added the public meter is what I, what I did. And I asked the assessor two weeks ago to provide me information in why he called it a three-unit and two-building. And he initially said he'll get back to me, no response, three times trying to reach him. He's staying way off the radar. And I was told by your office that he is the final say, and then it comes to the building department, he's the one who...
The assessor observes what's in there, and it has to be, that has to be the description on the card. He doesn't...
Right. And just how that works, we just started with a new assessing company this year, so he has not... Yeah, okay.
So there is a cycle where every four years, they will do 25% of the town and do an assessment. So I wouldn't pin that too heavy on him, because he's only been at this since like March.
Just saying that I did talk to him. He told me he would get me an answer in two days. I said, "That's fine." It was a Thursday. He said, "By Monday." I said, "By Monday or Tuesday, yes, I should be able to get you back an answer by Monday." Two more, reach out to him two more times, he's voiding like the plague. And I'm not saying that he's the answer or not the answer. I'm just saying that he initially talked to me, and then after he contacted the building department, he won't answer my calls.
And so what I'm reading here is, what he says, it doesn't matter if it's called an apartment or not, it's just taxed as a finished space above the garage. So it's a living space.
Does that say that there?
Yeah, that's what I'm reading as his comment on it.
That's what he told, I talked to him today.
Is that one of the documents I gave you?
No.
Oh. Did you read all the other ones, too?
He's just saying, technically, he is being taxed at the same, if he had a legal apartment over the garage, it is a finished space, and the assessor says it doesn't matter if it is called an apartment or not. So if you have a finished space above your garage, it would be taxed as...
Okay. I understand that piece, I understand that piece of it, but in the previous company that denied the abatement, it clearly states three apartments and two buildings. Same the way, same way the septic design was applied for and approved. And I'm not saying that you approved it, I'm not saying that the building inspector approved it, the town approved it.
But I mean, if you came in for a septic design and you said you wanted six, you, it was designed for six bedrooms, and you only had two in your house, we wouldn't, if that's what you want, if you want an oversized septic tank, then that's on you.
If you wanted six bedrooms, right?
If you want a 400 amp service on your house...
Right, no, I get it. I'm in the building business. This doesn't say six bedrooms. This says three apartments, septic.
Three one-bedroom apartments.
Yes. That's the difference. You see what I'm saying? You have to see it from my point. I'm not trying to add a unit illegally or...
Well, here's the dilemma, that the health inspector, the building inspector, any of the inspectors cannot grant a variance to the ordinance, which says two families. Okay? So if a apartment's put in illegally, if they sign off on a permit because you wanna divide up your electricity, things like that, the only one who can grant relief to that ordinance is the ZBA. They're the only ones that can turn a home in a two-family into a three-family in a district that only allows a three, a two-family home.
Okay, I understand that, and I appreciate that.
But Depping said, would you be opposed to go into the ZBA now and seeking relief on this issue, and then squaring it up?
Well, before I, before we go there, give you due respect. So you can't, the building official and the health inspector can't grant that authority, right, to change the zoning? But what's the town policy on illegal apartments? So I have an illegal apartment at 22 Main Street. You know about it. The building inspector knows about it. What's the town policy to stop that apartment from being rented?
We want like a written policy?
I would like to know how this town, what the policy is. What do you do once you know about an illegal apartment? This is standard throughout New Hampshire, Mass., most states. What's the policy? Does anybody have it?
Normally, when there's violation to zoning, they would get a notice of violation.
Okay. So, so let me understand.
That doesn't, that's not saying that every single violation, people have been notified for.
Okay. So, so you, once in a while, you respond to a complaint of an illegal apartment? Is that the policy of this town? And I'm not trying to push the button further than I need to here. I would like an answer, because you're basically telling me I have to go through this month, I don't know how many month process to get relief, if I get relief. I would like to know what the town policy is, knowing for 20-plus years that this is a living space, knowing for the time since they applied for that permit for the septic, that it's been passed to selectmen.
When you say no...
Is it okay if I finish, please?
Sure.
When it came past the selectmen, that they have three apartments on a permit, and it came past the selectmen, how did it get passed without flagging it as an illegal apartment, knowing that there was an apartment there?
What?
The assessor's clearly made it in the note.
The selectmen, the thing you're saying about the selectmen, is that, are you talking about the approval for operation that says the board of selectmen?
Yes.
The board of selectmen doesn't get that. That's the town.
Okay.
Just goes to the town. The board of selectmen doesn't review these. The board of selectmen doesn't sign off on them.
Okay. What about the permit for the four meters?
About the what?
Was that a red flag to anybody in the town, like the electric inspector?
What about the what?
It's a two-family. The permit was pulled and approved for four meters.
Board of selectmen wouldn't see that.
Board of selectmen, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is...
Yeah, I would, I would agree, I would agree with you that the, that the electrical inspector should have said, "Why do you want three meters up there?" And if you said, "Well, it's because I have three apartments," okay, and the card said that it's only in a two-family zone...
Right.
Then, yeah, they probably shouldn't have given you that permit.
How often would somebody do, for four meters, more than three units or four units? Three in a public or, this doesn't happen. We don't have electric meters for water heaters anymore, or anything like that. So how many, how often would that happen? All I'm trying to explain is, this has passed many deaths and never been flagged, until recently. It has gone by the health inspector, the building inspector, if he's known about it and there was no response to his request to get a, an extra apartment and go before zoning, or ZBA, and there was no response, why did it just die at his desk? Why all of a sudden is it so important to the building inspector? Because the property's for sale, it's under agreement, I already lost a buyer. That's kinda why it's happening right now. Those notes were accumulated after it went on the market, and this is not because it's any different than it was 10 or 20 years ago. It's the same space. It's the same condition. It's the same unit.
Do we know when the zoning went into effect limiting units in rural residential?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Hmm?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
I don't know. I mean, because at one time, it was not illegal. The zoning was put in.
Yeah, it was before zoning.
Yeah. Do you know when that zoning went into effect?
I think that was in the 70s.
But I mean, we'll say, again, with the meters thing, if you wanna have that many meters, I have a duplex. I have four meters at my house. One for an outbuilding, one for a shared water pump that is split between the two units. You know, there's four, and there's only two units there. So I, if someone wants that, someone can get that. The electrical inspector is not... The electrical inspector is not, he may have had a busy day and just been like, "Yep, no problem, man, you're all set." And.
I get it, I get it, it's, but it's not one thing, right? It's the septic, it's the use, it's the tax for all these years. It's been identified by the building inspector four years ago, but he never followed up on it. It's accumulation of all these events, the reason why I'm here. Is, it's not because of any other reason then, it's not just one piece of paper. Everything in the jacket says there's an apartment there and nobody ever did anything about it. And now, the property's for sale and everybody's concerned about it, and I get it, I'm not trying to pull a wool over your eyes, but it says it right there, three apartments. It says it on the tax card. Two apartments in one building, apartment over the garage, studio over the garage, that's how it's alluded to. So, it's all these things put together that are my argument.
And honestly, I think you have a great case before the ZBA, but we don't even have the authority to grant a change in the zoning or a variance in the zoning for you. The selectmen don't. The ZBA is the only board that has that authority.
And with all due respect, why am I here? Why was I appointed to come to this selectman meeting by the office of the inspector? Why am I even wasting your time and mine? If you don't have authority to oversee anything.
We're looking at these notes in the file, they're dated twelve-three fifteen. Changes first floor garage equals doors gone, no permits. Windows installed, increased living space, question mark, bedroom, needs variance.
There was no increase in living space.
Says expansion.
Well, I think.
First, second mail card twelve-four fifteen.
That wasn't me, that was there for twenty-something years. That wasn't my doing.
Then there's a note here twelve-fourteen with your name on it, it says, "Called, called, we'll pull permit for garage door work." Did you ever do that?
No. So if I was found guilty of replacing windows, straight-up replacements, and closing in a wall that was falling apart that was letting window in, so then they can triple fine me and I'll pay the permit and I'll have them come out and look at it. So that's what was done at that property, nothing else. So that doesn't change the fact that that apartment's been the same way for twenty-something years.
Well, it sounds like it, it, in here, he talked to you. You were supposed to pull a permit for the garage door work. It says, "We'll start variance work for future expansive, expansion of non-conformity."
I never had any plans of expanding anything, so why would I go?
Non-conformity was a third apartment in a two-family.
I didn't do, I didn't do the work, the work was existing. That whole conversation was about me not pulling a permit to replace windows, which in most towns, it's not even.
So you're saying that he never told you that that's in violation and that you, you would need to get a variance because it's non-conforming?
The windows and the closing on the wall that was letting air in? No, not at all.
No, about, about the, uh, about the space above the garage.
He never, he never told me that I should start a process to make that conforming. It's, it's impossible to make it conforming. It was built twenty-something years ago.
Here's a, I, did you see those, the copy of the notes?
No. Can I look at it? Number four is not true. Increased living space. The only thing that he has here is the garage, I took the garage door out and closed the wall so it didn't freeze the pipes. And replacement windows were installed. I wasn't increasing or attempting to increase living space, bedroom. There's no bedroom, it's a studio.
It's a question mark.
Yeah, yeah, but, but I'm saying is number.
He didn't know what was being done.
Right, but if that's why we're here, that's not what was done. So I, I had no intentions of doing that. And expansion of first and second, need variance, expansion of first and second. Wasn't expanding anything. Expansion is I'm adding on. I didn't add on anything. It was existing space.
It's non-conforming because it's only two units permitted.
But that's not what he says here. He says, he thought that I was expanding a living space to the first floor of the garage.
No, he's saying he mailed the card on the, the first time he mailed the card was twelve-four fifteen, the second time he mailed the card was twelve-nine fifteen. That's how I read that.
I see the note here, but where's the card and where's the certified letter?
Needing the variance.
It says expansion of first and second. It's, it's.
Well, to me, it, it, I mean, this is when he, he found out these changes had taken place.
The first, first what though?
This.
Doesn't really say, right? It says short-term, short variance work for, we'll start variance work for future expansion. Not for non-conformity, he's calling out future expansion, which was not happening, so.
He means expansion to a three-family rather than a two-family.
No, but, yeah, I understand, but he's calling out future expansion. That's not going to really fly anywhere. He's calling future. That's after today.
To use it as a rented apartment, I think his concern is that there was no permit and.
So.
Fire safety.
With all due respect, you're able to interpret what he thought. He's not here. I'm sure he did and I'm not saying.
As well, and I'm sure he told you all this.
He didn't, because he's talking about future expansion. That's something different than bringing something into conformity. It's non-conforming.
The bottom line on this, whether we agree or disagree, it has to go ZBA.
True.
And I think you have, I think you have a strong case.
Nothing we can do about it. Agree or disagree? It's a ZBA issue. I mean, the, the only issue I see before us is whether we deal with any of this stuff on here, some of which you say isn't true or not, but, you know, we'd have to talk to Robert and everything else, but taking this page out of it, your issue needs to go to the ZBA. Because we can't grant that. And they would look at the fact that when that variance took place, when the change took place, and the zoning took place.
Okay. What is the town's policy? So you, so it's a, just a loose policy on illegal spaces? I just need to know.
When, when we find something, we usually work with the person to come to a reasonable solution for all parties involved.
Okay.
I've only been on for one year, three months, eight days and a couple hours, all right? And we are coming across stuff that no one's noticed. When we do, we ask the people to try. And so I think what this new board is asking you is just to go to ZBA and have that done. It's no different than anything else in my short time here that we've done when we come across something. We don't turn a blind eye to something when it's brought to our attention. We first address them usually just.
No, we, we don't triple fines or anything like that. We try to work with people and make it reasonable, you know, to, to bring things in compliance.
Understanding that, you know that I'm here not because you asked me to come. I'm here because I see a problem and I ask to be heard. I wasn't drug in here with all these violations that he's got an illegal apartment. This was never brought up as an illegal apartment. It was built, it was taxed, it was recognized, and I'm here wasting your time then on an issue that you had no control over. And I, so I, so I, I, now I understand the reason why, or what you do with an illegal apartment, because there's really no answer to that. But further than that, I'm being passed on to the ZBA. Why did they direct me to come and see you, gentlemen?
Aren't you here because the property record says it's a two-family and, and you want to sell the property as a three-family?
No.
So it's a problem for you.
It's really not why I'm here. I'm here.
By how you're here.
I'm here because this was just recently brought up by the building inspector because it was put on the market. I'm not here to fight for what I see in the paperwork to be true. I'm here to ask, why is it changing now that I have an issue with the building inspector and I've been, I'm trying to sell the property and the buyer's being told it's only a two-unit?
Okay, so, so our building inspector got in contact with you?
I'm dealing with Six Spruce Lane, and in that conversation, he asked me about this property. When he was alert, he, somebody passed a message along.
What's Six Spruce Lane?
For sale. Sorry?
What's Six Spruce Lane?
Down behind Red Bell Antique. He, he purchased that property.
Purchased it to redevelop it.
Redevelop it.
Clean it up. I went for permits for, so I went, so here's, here's the, 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 the not-so-funny part. I went for permits for a property to change windows and doors to existing sizes. And the building inspector of Kingston denied me because he thought I was changing the use, and I wasn't. I was trying to secure my property. So we got in a big dispute over it and he finally agreed that he needed to issue me my permit, because I'm not changing the use and I wasn't trying to build an apartment there. There's no bathroom, no kitchen, but it is a finished space that I would recognize as a finished space. A pool room or whatever anybody wanted to call it, but I didn't have to rip it out because there's nothing there that's illegal. And I had a, a, we had a dispute about it.
And this is, you're talking about this one or Spruce?
I'm talking about Spruce. That's when this came to light and this started to be an issue.
So this is, it's similar to Spruce, except that's not.
No, it's not a living space.
That's not an apartment yet.
Yeah, it's not an apartment. It never will be.
So can I ask, isn't it feasible that Robert saw there was a non-conforming use? He had sent you information about going before the ZBA and that's why he brought it up when he was discussing with you on another? It just seems weird that that would come up.
Well, if it was that big of an issue and it was a, that big of a violation, existing from before whoever built it, why did, why did it wait until I was near him? Why did it, why did this card that he says he sent never get turned into anything else? What's the policy of Kingston's?
Because a lot of people just say, "You know what? It's not worth it. I don't want to, I don't want to turn that into apartment. I just want to leave that as a finished space," and we never hear from them again and it it just doesn't come up again.
No, I'm actually asking why the building inspector didn't flag this property that we're talking about tonight.
He probably should have. He did in his own mind and that's why he hit you on it when you came in on something else.
He didn't even know who the owner was at that time, to be honest with you.
Well, how'd it come up then?
It came up after, because I came in and pulled the driveway permit for this property. And then he put two and two together, so it was, they were separated.
Are they in two different names, the properties?
Different names. They're different entities.
Well, he remembered you, right? And remembered talking to you about the other one.
No, he remembered after I came in for the permit.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
And then he said, "Hey, wait a minute. I sent you information and you never responded on it."
That's definitely not the way it went, but we can all assume it whatever we want. If you're saying you can't help me here or offer me any relief, my final question is, why am I here? Why am I here? Why wasn't I sent right to the ZBA?
I thought you wanted to be here to be heard.
No, if I wanted to be heard by somebody that could actually do something about the situation.
Well, you called and asked to be on the agenda and that's.
Because I asked, who do I talk to? And I was told the selectman. Just like the assessor told me, just like the building department told me that the assessor has the final say on what a property is, now they're, now they're saying it's something different. Now the assessor doesn't have the say. Now it's the building inspector, it looks like, that has all the say on what a property is. And I don't even know that that's the case, that he really has all the authority.
Well.
And I'm not trying to.
The notes in the files say, Robert knows that it needs a variance. And that's what he wrote on these notes that are in the file.
When did Robert become building inspector?
I don't know the date off the top of my head. It's been a while.
Ten years, fifteen, seven?
Ten anyways.
All right. So he was the inspector when the permit was pulled for the septic. He has nothing to do with the septic. But in that small office, nobody knows what's going on. Oh, they're putting a septic in, they're upgrading the septic.
The septic doesn't, the septic doesn't designate apartments. It doesn't.
I get it. No, I get it. No, I get it. But, but he didn't know about the septic, he didn't know about the updated electrical.
He wouldn't know.
In that small office, because there's so many jobs going on, it's probably more credible that he, he did know. Nothing was ever done about this property over twenty-something years until now I put it on the market. That's all that I'm telling you. And that's the way this is.
Well, I, it appears to me something was done about it in fifteen.
A card that you, that, where's the certified letter? Where's the copy of it? Where, where's, other than a note?
Did he speak to you?
He spoke to me and none of that came out of his mouth. We spoke about a permit for windows that were replaced and closing a garage door, and that's it.
So you're saying he didn't tell you any of the stuff that's on here?
He didn't tell me any of that stuff. He said if you're expanding the first floor to make space for the second floor, you're going to have to go for a variance. He did not say that the second floor, get the tenants out of there. He knew it was rented. Get the tenants out, it's an illegal apartment. He didn't do any of that.
Well, I mean, we can derive things from his notes, but without him here to physically speak to it, I mean, it doesn't change the fact that we can't do anything for you tonight.
It, it, it only has one, one form of egress, right?
Yes, so do many apartments built twenty years ago or thirty years ago. How many have two forms? I have a, a twenty-unit building that has one form of egress other than windows that was built in eighty-nine. This place was built forty, fifty, sixty years ago. Because in eighty-nine it met the codes. It wasn't non-conforming at that time.
Says, uh. Change the windows upstairs?
Yes.
Okay. If I was a bedding man, okay, I would say, he was trying to say, "You called looking for a permit to change the windows." At that time, you were doing some alternates to it. The codes might have been that in nineteen-eighty-nine or whenever the living space for the owner, as it says on the card, was built. It was identified as a living space for the owner. Now that you came in two thousand and fifteen to put in some windows, it's his obligation to tell you, it's non-conforming now. If you're doing work to it, it's non-conforming. Whether he conveyed that properly or not, it's a he said, she said. You're saying he never mentioned that to you? Um, he's made a note in the card that, you know, I sent the card telling him that, okay? No different, do you fish?
I don't fish and I don't gamble, but I can definitely tell you that the exact size window was put in exactly where the other.
But it doesn't matter, you were altering.
And I under, and I get it.
You're altering.
I get it, and, and if we were being hypothetical about it, that might make sense. The, the difference is, that was not part of any conversation with him. It was about the windows in the garage and the, the door being closed off, the garage door being closed off. That was the conversation. And it's not fair to me that you try to figure out what he meant. And it's not fair to me to stipulate to you what he said, because I can't document it to you. You can't document, and it's not fair that you're going to say that this is what he meant, because then we're just defending the building inspector. And I'm not here to not defend him, but it's in black and white, with the, the information's in black and white. And if he had that much of an issue, and that should have been in a certified letter, sent to the address, to the owner, period. And that was never done. A note, where's the note? We don't have a copy, we don't have the verbiage. We're just guessing what he said. So I'm not here to defend anything that he said or didn't say. I'm here to just ask you gentlemen, and what is, what is all this documentation for if none of it meant anything? It's called out clearly in different documents. I did not renovate the second floor. I did not change its use. All I did was triple fine me. I put some replacement windows in because the old windows were failing. I'm guilty. Triple fine me, I'll pay the fine. But other than that, it's not really fair to, to condemn what happened twenty-something years ago that's been documented throughout and then tell now, so what am I, now that we're in this hearing, now you want me to evict the tenant and, and lose the income from that space?
No.
That I've been generating to pay the taxes for the years that this town has been billing it, right? So, what's the, so now what do I do? So, so I have an illegal. So, so I have an illegal apartment, now you're saying?
So you go to the ZBA?
Yep.
And, and make your case to them.
And what if they turn me down?
Make your case to them about twenty years, you bought it that way and all this documentation, and see if they'll grant you relief. Because they're the only ones that can.
And what if they don't?
Well, then we gotta go from there. Probably end up in court.
Where would we go? To court so that we're gonna waste the town's money and my money to defend something that's been documented for years? And they should have stopped all this paperwork. They should have said no twenty years ago. Fifteen, twelve, nine, five years ago when I bought it? Why didn't the town put a stop to it then? This, you do have authority over, right? There's something here that slipped past everybody and everybody except for now that I'm selling the property. And that's not fair. I pay my taxes.
By that, it looks like there was discussion in fifteen. So I, I, I don't think it slipped by till just today.
And, and if, and if I had an attorney and we were calling the building inspector and he had to defend these notes, he wouldn't be able to. Clear on here. Expanding first and second floor, future. It's not for today, for yesterday. This is for future. Unfortunately, I've been involved in a little bit.
What, if you're gonna put in a fourth apartment, you mean?
I'm sorry?
What, to put in a fourth apartment?
I don't know. That's what he's saying though. He's saying first floor and second floor. Future expansion from twelve, three, fifteen. There's no plan for future expansion, so these notes really don't mean much. All that matters is, it was, it is, and it has been. And it's being taxed and it's documented throughout. And now the building inspector has a problem with Steve Pascoe and we're here. Because he's flagging the property. Because when I bought it, I could guarantee you this, my attorney is the, the pickiest attorney ever. She would have never had me close, allowed the bank to close that she was representing if she didn't call and verify there was three units. No way in the world.
Do you get title insurance?
I have title insurance, but that doesn't...
I talked to them about that.
Well, that, that's irrelevant because she called the town to get the information. I get it. We're passing the buck or, you know, sorry, I have to say.
Oh, you're saying your lawyer's great and all this, so...
We're just passing the...
If you did diligence on it, you would have found that out in search and title. And if they, if they went to you and said, "Two title investigation." Said that there was a three bedroom apartment there, you were good.
They questioned it. They questioned it. You know why it didn't get flagged? Because card number one says two units, card number two says another unit. That's why it got by. So why is the paperwork and why is the documentation in the assessor's office that's being provided to you tonight? Why is it conflicting? And why didn't anybody say, we gotta fix this? This guy might think he's got a three family. It never came up until I'm trying to sell a property. And that sends a bad message. And the fact that...
Well, that's not unusual that things don't come up till properties come up for sale.
And it came up for sale in two thousand and fifteen.
People put in illegal apartments. We don't know about it.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
And the realtors represented as a three, a three family.
Difference is it didn't come up in fifteen. Or I wouldn't have been able to close. And it wasn't the title insurance problem. It was the attorney that verified with the town, the tax cards and what they meant.
Do they have a letter from the town saying that it, it is approved for a three family? Does the attorney have that?
We have all the documentation that you're looking at and nobody said different. Nobody said any different when, when she called. Just like we don't have a letter that the building inspector sent this note that there's no record of. There's no record other than his notes, of a note. And I find that to be a little bit troubling too. So it's, it's just, it's all like under the microscope now. But it wasn't in fifteen when I bought it. Everybody's gotta know. There's not a lot of rental properties in town, right? Everybody's gotta know there's rentals there. It's not a owner occupied property.
No, we, we don't, we don't keep track of that.
Well, it's just another, it's just another tidbit of information that nobody knows anything. Everybody is playing they don't know until right now, but nobody...
Well, you're saying that, but we see these notes on, in the fif, in fifteen.
Yeah.
Fifteen.
You're, you're highlighting this note.
Was the follow-up, was there enough follow-up? I would say no, there was not.
But Mr. Chairman, I get it, right? I get there's a note, there's a, there's a, there's a mention of something here. But there's a lot more mention of three units and two buildings, three apartments, approved septic. There's a lot more talk about that, right? This is kinda borderline hearsay because there's no document that was certified, sent regarding any variance or any ZBA. But there's a lot of information to, contrary to what the tax card one is saying. That you're, it's your own information. It's, it's the town's information. And I, I find it hard to believe that for no reason, twenty something years went by and this all just flew fine. Doesn't make any sense.
Okay, well, we've laid out your options to you, okay? Um, I, I would, I would suggest you explore those. And if that doesn't work out for you, then take the next step. We can't give you relief.
So on one hand, you don't, you can't give relief with this information. But on the other hand, you haven't enforced it over twenty something years, right? That's basically what you're saying. You haven't enforced it in twenty something years and now you can't offer relief.
If the garage is allowed, that's not a three family.
It is. It was a living space. It's a living space. It means it's a...
Space is not a rented apartment.
It was clearly stated as a studio. I, I understand your...
Actually, it says owner's living space. It doesn't say rental. It says owner's living space, correct?
In one document. And the rest of them, it says studio, apartment. It says many other things on the other documents. If that's your final answer, I'll go with that.
Okay. Thank you. Gabrielle? Prior to us starting our meeting this evening, we spoke to our, um, our consultant and our attorney pertaining to the issue you, you've raised. Just recently, the state has significantly lowered the standards. We had been doing some testing with the state and doing some exploration on some of the properties in town. Uh, this is turning out to be a nationwide issue. They're running into many properties that have uh, different levels of contamination that aren't in proximity to any fire stations. So in, in talking to him, I, I know we're not gonna be able to give you the answer you're looking for, but we haven't made a determination on how we're gonna proceed since the state has taken the action that it has by lowering those standards to the lowest in the country.
So I'm clear what you're telling me, um, and my husband. The, the town at this point will not install the required filtration system in order for us to sell our property at fair market value, even though it is a law. Um, I understand this is a nationwide problem. I understand that is also a local problem and it's popping up in other areas. Um, I spoke today, um, with, um, Kate Emma at DES. Uh, she informed me that the water filtration systems that had been installed, with the exception of one, had been installed by DES. And the, um, the state was under the impression or had informed the town that they would need to pick up the ball. So with all due respect, because I could throw a stone and hit the fire station, I would say that we are not one of those people that we just randomly have this stuff in our water. And DES agrees with us.
The state identified the firehouse as the source. Other families that are affected above the levels have been remedied. We are now in that range.
And the state put in those systems, not the town.
No, the, the town put in one, the state put in the other one.
And, and that one was actually right next door. And that one, we have since found out that the, um, chemical contaminants in that does not match the one at the septic, at the fire station.
I did receive confirmation today that whatever is at the fire station uh, in their water supply that has not yet been remedied is the same stuff that's in our water that remains, that is now currently exceeding the state's standards. I am, I did receive a letter that was addressed, um, to Sleckman Heights, um, October fourth, where the town was supposed to inform and provide a water alternative immediately. I was home all day and nobody showed up to bring me any water. We've been purchasing water for over two years. About ten to twelve gallons a week. We don't brush our teeth with it. We don't drink with it. We don't cook with it.
Pets?
Our pets. We don't even give it to our pets. Our house is on the market. We're limiting our pool of buyers. I, I don't understand. I guess I just don't understand. Um, and as it relates to the environment, um, we've had additional concerns about the environment. We've gone through the proper channels and followed the laws to remove a vestibule on the front of our home that we had to have abated because there was a little lead paint on the roof. Although it was not a demolition, it was a deconstruction of our vestibule. It doubled the price of that project while concurrently, we're watching the church on the plains get scraped lead paint into the air.
It wasn't tended?
Nothing.
Just out there scraping, no issue? Yeah, we, we, you know, we followed the rules. We came to the town, did what we had to do. Like I said, the cost to get the, the tent put up for our home. You know, we followed the rules. We've done everything. This, this is, you know, not something we're making up. This is
This isn't something we...
Something with the state. Again, we just wanted to get our, you know, make a few renovations to our property, get everything addressed, sell it, welcome a new family to town. And, and this water issue is like the final straw. This is a serious concern. This is, you know...
And not just for us. I mean, our main concern is us and our family. But there are fifteen other families that are impacted and it has been identified by DES. This, these aren't just random places popping up around town. They are all within the radius of the fire station. So there's...
Well, that, that's not entirely true. There are other areas in town that are not in, uh, proximity to the fire station and it's popping up in their wells also.
But could I, could we just like, you know, use some common sense here and say that if we live three hundred feet from the fire station and there's an ongoing environmental investigation remediation project, that we have an argument that this isn't just something that's happened to us? I don't blame anyone sitting here for what happened. I know that back when, you know, the PFOs, nobody knew what that was. Nobody knew. And, and I understand, but now it exists. And it seems as though, the, it doesn't seem as though, it's very clear that the town is more concerned with the appearances. They are concerned with keeping the historic society looking historic. Um, we had a month's delay in putting our front steps in so we could reappear in the, with the historical society to give them the blueprints for the granite steps we installed. This isn't Williamsburg.
Okay, well, I, you know...
I'm just saying we would really appreciate some help so that we don't have to have the new people that wanna buy our house and live in this town be concerned for the health and safety. And I, and I feel, and, and my husband can speak for himself, that, um, when this investigation began, there was no communication from the town. And I understand at that point there was, you know, it was below those state guidelines um, that have now lowered. And I understand that's gonna be a problem and it's gonna be an expensive one for the town. And it's an expensive problem that people are gonna have to deal with. But it's important. What is more important than the health and safety of the townspeople? Right now, the town knows of sixteen properties. I know that the, it's gonna go bigger and there's gonna be more. But right now, there is clear evidence after at least four samples, our levels are holding steady and they are currently above the threshold by law. And we want to sell our home.
We understand what you're saying, okay? The state is the one who initiated the testing of the fire department in the first place because the foam had, that was used years ago, had that chemical in it along with a whole number of other chemicals. Um, in carpet cleaner, toothpaste, all kinds of things, okay? So they zeroed in on the fire station and said, oh, we'll test the water at the fire station. And it came back that there was, that water had some PFOAs in it, okay? And then from there, they're testing other areas and they went out, I think it was a thousand feet. And yes, there were some. But they're making the assumption that, and initially, we were looking at that like, well, I mean, if it was in the, in the firefighting foam, may, maybe that is what, where it came from. But now it's popping up all over the state, okay? And, and not necessarily in close proximity to fire departments. We just had one over at Bard Wells. Are you familiar with Bard Wells in East Kingston?
Heard all about it and I know, I've read everything that there is to read about the fire station investigation. DA, DES stepped in in two thousand and sixteen when people's wells were running dry and the police, the fire station became a water source. At which, a public water source, at which time that is when it was tested. And that is when that was, when the, the contaminants were found. It's also my understanding that the fire station hasn't even received the necessary water filtration system and their levels are off the chart. And I know nobody knows enough about this at this point, but how could that possibly be positively impacting anybody's water to have? There's an ongoing investigation. There, there's nothing, with all due respect, there is nothing you can tell me that is gonna make me think that what's going on with my water being currently over the, the law standard has anything to do other than the fact that I live, so we live so close to the fire station? Why, why should we have to limit our pool of buyers? Or if we do get a buyer who says, I'm not comfortable with this, and then we have to pay the cost of the water filtration system for something that, we didn't do that to the water. It is not our septic. We have a new septic system. I know that this occurs through all different circumstances and I know it's an, it's an ongoing problem, but there's a reason why our water has been tested four times in the last year. There's a reason why somebody from Stan Tech was at our house last week to test the water again.
It, it, and it's because the state is putting these regulations out there. That's, that's why.
Correct. And the town needs to obey the state law. Regardless of whether or not the town agrees with the cause. I was told today, there is no questioning, what is in your water is what is found currently at the fire station. I know that there are different variations of this.
It, what is, we have properties on the other side of town that the same chemical is found, okay? That's where the problem comes in. All of a sudden, these chemicals are showing up across the state and they're not in proximity to a fire department, okay? So it begs the differences. Okay, well, it doesn't sound like it's only fire departments that have created an issue, okay? And before the town accepts responsibility for PFOs in anybody's well throughout the town, we wanna make sure who's actually generating it.
But it is my understanding that the town did accept responsibility for the fire station and the surrounding homes. But it is my understanding that the town did accept responsibility for the fire station and the surrounding homes when this investigation began, or it wouldn't be called the Kingston, New Hampshire Fire Station Remediation Project.
And also the town has already installed some, right?
One.
The state, the state moved to install it.
Okay.
But as different sites pop up across the state, okay, this is, this is all new, okay? And they don't have a handle on really the amount of contamination throughout the state and how that contamination has been created. That's the issue, okay? Yes, I I think the DEA, the DES has said, okay, well, any, any place with a fire department within, you know, so many feet, that's gonna be the generator. Well, how do you explain places that have it that aren't anywhere near fire departments?
With all due respect-
The way they explain it, it is, people using household chemicals and it's been in ca- all different chemicals for a number of years, how do they dispose of that? It goes down their septic systems, to the point where they're testing septic systems for if they have caffeine in them or or the water, if it has caffeine in it, artificial sweetness, to indicate that, yes, if that's in your water, the only way that gets there is through a septic system. Okay, so we're looking at different things to determine who in fact is the generator, okay? And I think you're gonna find throughout the state, there's, there's gonna be lots of generators, not just fire departments.
I understand that, but our water is directly impacted by the fire station and that-
You're, you're, I understand how you're drawing that conclusion.
It's not a conclusion, it's an ongoing environmental investigation and there is a new law with new standards and now we fall into those standards. So you, the town is required by the state, regardless of this other information that you're gathering to see who else might be at fault, the town has already accepted responsibility for the fire station and any, we're-
Anything in 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 town within a mile of the fire station?
No, anything that is within direct radius or however many, you said a thousand feet. I don't know how many feet we are from the fire station, but it's directly across the street.
Well, how about, how about the house next door that is up gradient of the water flow and has PFOs that is not the same profile as the fire department's contamination? Should the town accept responsibility for that too?
I honestly-
The state seems to think we should.
Well, I do know that what is found in our water is the same stuff that is found in the fire station water. I confirmed that today. So I don't see how much more proof is needed that the town is responsible for fixing our water. Or let's just say you guys think that it could come from one of many different sources. I'm coming to you as, I grew up in this town and we hoped to raise our son here and that didn't work out. And we've been concerned about our water for over two years and we've been buying bottled water. We don't feed it to our pets, we don't brush our teeth with it, and now we're hoping to sell our home. And it is on the market. And I, and I mean, so I'm saying, even if you don't believe where, why my water is the way that it is, I'm a concerned towns person who pays taxes, I grew up in this town, I've lived here for the last nine years, owned my home for the last seven years, and I'm asking for help. And if you, I, can you help us or no? Or you're just gonna say, you know, no, it's, could be anything. I know it's not anything. I know it's the fire station. And I don't blame you guys, I don't blame the fire station, nobody knew. Now we know.
Well, that's the problem. We don't necessarily know. That's the problem. Because all these other things are popping up and it it initially, the DES says, oh yeah, anything close to a fire department, that that's definitely what the issue was. Now they can't explain why these other um chem- these chemicals are showing up in other people's wells that aren't near fire stations. So what the town is doing is stepping back and saying, okay, well, we're gonna investigate this and decide how we're gonna proceed. Uh, we're gonna proceed where any s- any, any uh property that comes up with that in their well that the town's gonna take responsibility for?
So we understand that and and and, you know, we're not here on behalf of the whole town, although it, you know, we were not properly informed. All this information we gathered on our own, reaching out to the state and the DES. I'll be honest, the state, the town did not properly inform the citizens, I gotta say.
And we have a forum on October twenty-third. It took-
Correct, but it's been two and a half years, so-
I I feel your pain and I understand your frustration. I I, you know, the the what, your opinions are leading you to believe as facts and I'm not here to dispute anything, but one month ago, those standards, the state said was fine for your well, but these others, no. And arbitrarily, without any public input, any scientific input, the state of New Hampshire lowered the standards to the strictest in the entire country. And the sixteen wells that identified, we are sitting here right now looking at, the sixteen wells that are identified could easily turn into sixty wells, can turn into six hundred wells, and we don't know what to do. Unfortunately, I hear exactly what you're saying. You're in a position, you're trying to sell your house and you're caught in a rock and a hard place, and I don't deny that, and I, believe me, it's tearing me apart and I feel your pain. But as the town, we have to sit there and look, it's like, wait a minute, one month ago, it was okay. Now it's not. I understand you chose not to feed your, your, your pets the water, you didn't use it, but the state said the standards were okay. And arbitrarily, they're forcing it down our throat. We never put in, we put in one septic system, I mean, one water filtration system that we just recently found out is a different chemical compound. And before we start doing that stuff, we have to look and say, wait a minute, where is this coming from?
But if if we are able to show through the testing, which we have, that exactly what's in our water and that can be identified and it can be, you know-
But one month ago, the standard was okay, allegedly.
But but right, so so that's not our opinion, right?
That's, that's fact, that's law.
Services of the state changed that, not us. They did it for a reason, so it's not arbitrary. And I thought someone from, was gonna be here from, is it Stantec?
Stantec. Dave Alwine.
Supposed to be, we've been talking to Dave Alwine, Kate, Emma, Emma Kate, whatever.
I've spoken to the EPA, the Department of Health and Human Services. And regardless of, it sounds like you guys aren't gonna help us or you're gonna, there's gonna be some ongoing prolonged investigation just hopefully you guys don't have to pay for whatever um. The very least that the town could have done would have been that when this was identified, even in the the wells that it was, the town should have informed the residents, absolutely without a doubt.
Did, didn't the state send out stuff to everybody? Didn't the state?
No, the, no, the the lab did. But I'm saying, and 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 I would say too, that the town can't assume that anybody could read the website, that anybody could make their way to a meeting, that anybody in town could even read.
Well, we, we-
I'm just saying that the town certainly could have done better communicating what, what was potentially in the water and the known health risks to humans and pets.
So we had our water independently tested as well, right? So we're, we're not making a- assumptions here. And and again, too, just given our vicinity of our home being across the street from the firehouse, I get what you're saying. I know the domino effect and sure, three miles away, but we're not there, we're next door. We're right across the street from the firehouse.
I understand that.
So it it's not like it's a reach here. And and again, we're not looking to say, point a finger to blame. But yeah, we we just, I don't know, accountability or just of, hey, twenty, thirty years ago, no one knew. We get it, we weren't even here, or I wasn't. But um, you know, we we could still make it right, we could still help out. Like, you know, we pay our taxes, we don't cause problems, we we've been model citizens.
It's not that, it's, it's not that.
No, it's just that nobody can help us. That's the bottom line because nobody's willing to actually acknowledge that the fire station, well, although it already has been acknowledged, so that's the part that's confusing me. It's been determined-
It was assumed because it was utilized in firefighting foam that, and it showed up in a fire department's well, that that's, that's clearly what it is, okay? But like I said, this is a relatively new thing. Now it's popping up everywhere.
I understand.
Okay, so the town's taking the position that, well, wait a minute, before we rush into putting treatment systems in everybody, in every house in Kingston, let's ascertain where the contaminants are actually coming from, okay? Again, Bard Bard Wells is a prime example of, it was a company that pumped out septic systems, disposed of it on their property and contaminated the surrounding residents' wells. That didn't come from a fire department. That came from chemicals that were introduced to people's septic systems.
But why is that one to you a feel, that's like a done deal, but the fact that-
What is, what, what's a done deal?
That one, you're saying that that, that-
All's that says to us is, wait a minute, we, it hasn't been demonstrated that it's definitely the fire department. If the fire department was a generator, why wouldn't the fire department's well be higher than everybody else's? If it was, actually happened on that property? It isn't.
But I guess that doesn't-
So all's we're saying is, before this turns into a huge thing, w- we need to gather the facts and find out exactly where accountability is.
But the state has already determined that the town is accountable.
The state is saying it's the firehouse.
Alright, we know what the state is saying. We know what the state is saying and they have no explanation about these other sites that aren't in proximity to a fire department or are up gradient of the water flow or in Bard Wells case, where did that come from? It's not near a fire department, okay? So like I said, this is a relatively new thing that's developed over the last couple of years. They don't have all the answers. Yes, they have jumped on, oh, if it's in, close to a fire department, it's clearly the fire department. Okay, it it the, the pick, it's a much bigger issue than directly around the fire department. I wish it was contained right to the fire department and then you you could make that argument. But when it starts popping up every place else, it it tells us that, well, wait a minute, this is, this is a bigger issue than than we know.
I I would like to just ask um Selectman Chief Briggs, um just because somebody doesn't agree with a law doesn't mean that you don't have to abide by it, correct?
That's correct. So what would happen is the state would send us a letter indicating, uh, which I'm sure at some point they'll be sending us information on it.
But we gotta, well, this is the state.
Well, this letter is stating, this is stating that the the town should have provided us immediately with drinking water and we didn't receive that. Did you receive that?
It does say, yeah, it says the town is responsible for immediately providing these impacted receptors with an alternate source of water.
Which I understand is not the filtration system we are looking for. And we don't want some big tank of water on the side of our house looking like a science project when we're trying to sell it.
So I do believe that, that Stantec is going to be in contact with the state and doing some further research.
But we don't have time for further research. What's that?
Your well's contaminated as well?
Yeah, our well is contaminated by two sick dogs. I got one home right now that people never sleep.
Well, I, and I believe, I I don't know, I-
I lived on Main Street for eleven years.
Well, I know that there are other sources of contamination like the Superfund site on one twenty-five and that that's, you know, I know there are concerns all over, but I know that the fire station has been identified as one.
That, that likewise has uh PFOAs in it. That's where the conversation came up about testing to see where those PFOAs are coming from. In fact, they tested Country Point, I believe, didn't they as well?
Yeah, Greenwood too.
So, so I know the state is in constant communication. I'll give you an example. Uh, we heard tonight that um, that Stratum allegedly is one town that is not doing, I'm not sure, because I haven't researched it myself, but Stratum.
Lebanon, there's a bunch of communities.
There's a bunch of communities that are doing the same thing until they figure out, okay, before we accept responsibility for that because it will cost the town millions. Uh, we wanna make sure that, that a hundred percent that the town is the generator of the PFOAs. So that's what the process is now. Many, many towns are doing it and Stratum is one. So um, that's why we had a conversation with our attorney tonight before the town says, okay, we'll accept responsibility for everybody's well and and that's kinda why the other towns are doing it too, so.
We really can't accept this possible vulnerability of the town and the state's problem. I've tested-
So, but there, there will be some more uh communication with the state. Um, and it's not gonna be months away. It's gonna be, what did Dave tell us tonight? It's gonna be within the next week or two?
October twenty-third. And I I hear, I I think the town could have done a better job of communicating stuff. I don't deny that.
Communicate anything.
They, I worked, it took me six months to get the state to come over and explain PFOAs to the residents.
Well, it took me three months to learn all about this stuff because nobody told me anything.
Yeah.
No, and that became a concern. When they had the expansion of the fire station, I was there and there were a lot of residents who were there with not questions about the new fire station, they wanted to know what was going on. And that was kinda the first time that I saw that no one had really taken the time to sit down and explain what we, what the procedure was. I'm not a chemical engineer, I don't know how to explain it to people, but since then, we've been trying to get someone who is knowledgeable on it. And we did have a meeting here, not with the state, but we did have a meeting with our, when Dave came out and it was when the EPA guys were here, trying to answer some of those questions for people. But again, like Mark said, this is high level stuff where you're talking about parts per trillion, which essentially is seven Olympic sized swimming pools. You've got one droplet in that. I mean, and we're, we're playing catch up the whole way on this and, and again, I, I have to reiterate what everybody says. I one hundred percent feel for you on this. I understand your position, but we need to, before we go charging in and spending money, a lot of the town's money on a lot of this stuff, we need to figure out exactly where we're at. And unfortunately, that takes time for us to gather all the necessary information and put it together and and go forward.
And and to go along with that, so tonight, can you see that map there? So Dave from Stantec just gave us this, which has different information that we've seen in the past couple of weeks, so it constantly changes. So this is something new that he just gave us this evening, so um.
Doesn't the town have um, like a health officer? That should have even just said, hey, I don't really know what I'm talking about, but this is in the water and maybe you could Google it? I'm, I don't, I don't expect anybody to come to my house with a chemistry or, you know, a geology advanced degree.
People have been coming to your house though.
They have been coming to my house to test my water and thankfully I've been home to ask questions, but they're not the town. That's the independent, or the lab that you guys hired. That's not some, the health officer from the town coming to my home or going to anybody else's home that could possibly be affected by this. It's not a big town.
But he's the expert. That's why we hired him.
I understand, but I'm saying, even though nobody really, I'm just pointing out that there was zero communication and I don't expect anybody to sit down and be able to spend two hours breaking this down for anybody. But it could have at least been communicated.
Okay, and we recognize that and we've set up a forum, I think it's what, October twenty-third, I know-
But that's two years later, okay? So I I think we know all that we need to know then.
And what about the town being responsible immediately for impacted receptors with an alternate source of portable water?
Immediately, as of October fourth. It's now the seventh and nobody came to my house with bottled water. So when does that happen? Who, if it's not the Board of Selectmen?
Do all sixteen affected people, do they know about this as well? If this is an option or just, should we tell them? Should we communicate?
Should we get everybody to come next Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe they don't know that they, that they're eligible for water because theirs is contaminated.
And maybe they didn't, they couldn't get here tonight to ask you why you didn't immediately provide water to us.
Our second week coming, you know, I mean, again, you know, we're just not pointing the finger at anybody, but we need the town's help here.
They are helping. Trust me. Your problems in the county, Kingston, your problems in the EDS, trust, I know for a fact.
So when will we be getting our, um, water? Not fixed, but when will we be getting our alternate water source? Our bottled water, our tank of water, our water that we're not paying for every week, and schlepping out of the car and into our home by the gallon? Can you guys?
Well, we'll be corresponding with the state.
Pardon me?
We'll be corresponding with the state.
Well, the state is telling you in this letter that you need to do that immediately.
The state was telling us last month that it, it was, it was fine.
But the state was also telling you last month that you had to provide information to the state, but you didn't do it.
No, we have been providing information with the state right along...
Well, it says right here that there were the last...
As previously indicated, letter dated January sixteen, two thousand nineteen, September ten, two thousand eighteen, and January twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. So it says that this would be the fourth mailing. It says it right here in the letter.
And they pointed out that there were four times that you guys were late supplying the information that they requested. This doesn't seem like a huge priority.
It is a huge priority, and we've spent a lot of money on it. There's only a few, I think we end up sending the samples out to California to have, many labs can't even test for it. This is a relatively new thing. And it's time-consuming, and we've hired an expert to work on it. We've retained labs across the country to do it. Uh, I, I mean, it's not just something that, you know, and we're dependent on them. They're getting inundated throughout the state, and we're dependent on them. We've retained them, and we've spent thousands of dollars on them testing, generating reports. The DES says, okay, we want you to do this, and then we want you to do that, and then we want you to do this. We, we've done a, a full, a, a site evaluation of the fire department. We've had them down there digging wells on the property. So the town has spent a lot of money already, and we continue to do that.
Well, then come spend five thousand dollars at my house putting in a filtration system.
You get it, I won't.
Or let's throw another bonfire, and maybe the proceeds can go to the people that you know, those sixteen, excuse me, please, the sixteen people that live in town that you know as of this moment are currently impacted, potentially by some unknown source, aliens, that, throw another fundraiser, and maybe that money won't go to some fire station expansion. Why don't we fix the problem, the environmental concerns that we have in town, before you guys worry, or the town worries about how close those trucks are parked to each other? Because I live across the street from that, and I don't see any fire trucks coming whizzing out of there. No disrespect to first responders. But I don't see the need for a one-point-whatever-million-dollar fire station when that money could go to remediating these health concerns, or water, you know, fixing water.
And believe me, you haven't heard the end of the water situation. This is going to be an ongoing thing for a long time. We, we've just seen the tip of the iceberg with this chemical. And, and the changes that the DES has made, and suing the companies, it will not be unlike what happened with the MBTE suing Exxon and Mobil. And there's, there's already litigation, um, from attorney generals suing DuPont and the manufacturers of the chemical. This is a huge issue, and it's not, I, I don't want you to go underway with the misconception that it's only related, uh, related to firefighting foam, because it is not.
I know that it is everywhere. I know that it comes from all different places, and I would not be here making this argument if I didn't live a thousand feet from the fire station where it was found.
The other thing, again, it's not going to ease your pain, or what you're complaining about. Originally, the, the state came to the town and said, hey, we found this. Let's work together and do this. And the state and the town was like, sure. The town did wells, the state put in filtration systems, everything else, and everything was okay. They, this, before we got on, but the town cared about the residents. Then all of a sudden, the state kind of like did the tiptoe backwards and...
It's all your problem now.
It's all yours. We're out of it. In fact, you're going to do this even more. And the town's like, whoa. The state is a little bit bigger fish than the town of Kingston is. You know, I mean, we're not talking Peas Development, we're not, we're a small town, and we're working, we thought, we were doing good with the state.
And if it was isolated to just that, we, we could grasp that, you know what? It must be the fire department. But now that it pops up all over the state, it's all of a sudden, well, wait a minute, put the brakes on, because this isn't just a fire department foam issue.
I understand, and obviously, there is a Superfund site in town, so I'm not saying that every single part, people's well that tests for any of these, you know, different variations of this contaminant come from firefighting foam. I'm saying that our water is directly related to the fire station. The state is saying that the town needs to fix it, and...
And that's where the rub comes in, alright? It was okay when the state was, was okay, okay, we'll help you, we'll help you, we'll help you. Now they're like, yeah, no, we're out of it. We started you off, you're in good terms.
And by the way, you're going to test another thousand feet away. And then if something comes up there, maybe another thousand feet from there. Pretty soon, it'll be across town. And then it's like, whoa, wait a minute, how can that be that, you know, we got contamination at different locations that aren't anywhere near the fire department? Does that mean that the contain, any, anybody near the fire department, that that's automatically the, the generator? Not necessarily.
And that's not going to help you, and I, I truly feel, I, I really do. It's not going to help you trying to sell your house. I get that. And, you know?
Yeah, we'll just be in contact with the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll open it up to public comment. Anybody from the public would like to make a comment? You have three minutes.
Yes. Power water, that's not my name.
I know, whatever you want. Three minutes.
Okay. Yeah, um, power water. Powell Pond is contaminated. I've got two sick dogs. One is really sick. I've spent eighteen hundred dollars on him in Powell Pond. You know how our weeds are growing?
Mm-hmm.
Phosphates and everything? My channel is choking, so the flow isn't coming in. I tested Powell Pond. DES lies to you. I called every person on that department, gave my phone number. It started in July, when we had the real hot stuff. It's not the town's fault. It's the state's fault. I know for...
You're going to use the microphone, okay?
Oh, no, don't, I don't want to do that.
You, you do.
No, I'm not.
You're supposed to identify yourself, and tell us where you, where you live, and, uh...
Meg Thunkwoods.
That's our SOP.
Twenty-three Coopers, twenty-six Coopers, twenty-eight Coopers.
Thank you.
Okay. It's not this, it's not this town's fault. It's the state's fault. Do I really have to talk on this? Alright.
You have two minutes.
It started in July.
Two minutes.
Alright, it started in July. I looked down at the water. Now, I've been here fifty-eight years. Property in the family's been here eighty-five years. Back three years, four years ago, Dad was alive. They came and did our well. He said to me, get down in that cellar with them. I said, why? He said, if you think the state is coming out of the goodness of their heart to test this well, you're out of your mind. He said, pump them. Get all the information you can. And I did. Your best group of people is the UNH. I have a nephew in research. He's extremely intelligent. Works for Genzyme. Is that going to go in there? He develops medications for people who are dying and stuff. His dog and my dog. Auntie, look at this water. Violet, light blue to violet. That's when it's starting to die. I went around Powell Pond. I tested. I know what I'm looking for. Phosphates are one of the reasons, and they won't let us dig up Powell to open those channels. It's not just Millfield. It goes beyond it. I believe it's Barrel Factory, because I've got people who have come out of the woodwork that used to work there back when I was in high school. Now you go back to some of the selectmen in that. You know. You know I know what I'm talking about, too.
I hate to tell you, but the three minute, your three minutes is up.
Okay, that's all I wanted you to know. It's not the town. It's the state.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, old business. Was, uh, Five Parsons coming in, or?
No, they, you just need to do the, um...
Okay, somebody want to make a motion on, uh, Five Parsons Way, the, um, request to unmerge the lots?
I make a motion to deny the request to unmerge Five Parsons Way, based on the fact that all evidence that we have been able to find is evident of a merger by conduct when the initial building was built.
Second.
Point of erota? What, what was the original, originally, there was a vote to unmerge it, and you three made that. What was, what did we do after that? Because I believe, because you were in the affirmative, the three that made the motion have to make the motion to deny it.
Alright. You are correct, and I withdraw my motion.
And I'll make that motion, as he worded it.
It has to be seconded from you guys, because we're in the, we can't.
I abstained on that one.
Did you abstain on that one? Yeah, but even then, you, you were in a majority. The majority has to bring it up.
Bring what? I didn't hear what you said.
Because, you, you guys were the majority who took a vote, in order to reverse it, you have, the three people that took the maj, the majority have to make the decision.
And if it doesn't get a second, what happens?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
There you go. Now we're in discussion.
Um, we, we spoke to our counsel. Um, he reviewed the information. It was his feeling that, um, it wasn't an involuntary merger. It was a merger by conduct, because the well, um, was placed on that other property. And if it was the intention of the property owner to retain that as a separate parcel, they would have put the home, the septic, and the well on one parcel. So he thought it was merged by conduct, like Phil referred to.
And I'll say that I made the motion that night based off another property that was around the corner, finding out later that it was a totally different circumstance.
Correct. It was a, that was a different circumstance, as well as it was property mentioned on Rockerman Road, again, the Ball Road. And we did look at all other properties and saw that there were completely different set of circumstances. Um, and how on the end of voting is because of the, the term merger by conduct.
Based upon the attorney's recommendation.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of denying the request to unmerge the lots at Five Parsons Way, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. HVAC bids?
I'm gonna make a recommendation that we accept Mass Mechanical's bid for forty-one thousand five hundred. As you know, the bids were very close, and after reviewing them, they were supplying a little more...
I'll second that motion.
Equipment and services. I have not talked to him for a timetable yet, but I did go through this with Rich, and, uh, he was on board with doing it.
How many, I, I wasn't here last week. How many, um...
Two.
It was only two bids?
Hundred and fifty dollars apart.
Have we done business with the other bid? With the other bidder?
Mass Mechanical and, uh, Keys Northeast.
Do we, have we done any business with either?
Mass Mechanical's highly recommended, and they are also in New Hampshire, where the other company is not.
Okay, and like you said, they, they are, there's extras in there in the bid.
So I have the motion to accept that bid. Uh, you got a second?
I did. I'm seconding it.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the bid, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
One.
Okay. You don't want to eat.
New business? Committee liaison reports?
Um, I don't know the results of it, but the Budget Committee did meet today at seven o'clock downstairs. It was obviously up here, so... Um, but I did hear from the chair that, um, they were going to recommend Charles Hart to, um, sit in on it. So I don't know where we're currently spaced as far as, uh, whether it's a full board or not. I don't know that.
Have we received all the, uh, budgets from all the departments?
Uh, for the CIP, you know, the budgets, I don't...
I think the budget was supposed to be in September, right, to the selectmen? End of September?
No, it's Octo, it's, it's, I think, coming up this week or something. It's, it's in October.
What's that? I thought it, I thought I read that today, that it was September, like, twenty-eighth or something, that all the budgets were supposed to be in.
I can check on it tomorrow and see what's come in.
Okay.
It hasn't got to me yet. It's, it's still in Cindy right now.
Okay. Any other liaison reports?
Yes, um, from the Conservation Commission. Um, they were approached by Chuck Hanigan. That owns ten acres of land in town that is very, very wet, and he's interested in seeing if the town is willing to trade that land for a bu, buildable lot, someplace that we have. I told him I would bring the request here, that, that I thought if anything was going to happen, it'd have to make a formal request, but I didn't see any, I mean, the tax value on the land is in the hundreds. It's so bad. Tax, tax value.
Uh, I mean, I'd have to see a proposal in front of me, but I don't understand why the town would even detain the, um, to tell them, put forward a, a, a proposal. Why would we want wetlands that...
But that's...
If he wants to donate to the town, I'm sure the town would take it, seeing we don't have to lose any tax fees.
That was kind of my feeling on it, but I said I'd bring it forward.
I mean, without a formal presentation, there's nothing I could do, but why, I don't even know if the town would detain it.
I guess bottom line, does anybody have an interest at all in considering it, or do you want a formal...
Just any parcel he wants?
That should be in there.
A buildable one.
He just wants something buildable, and he's willing to give that for conservation use.
Where is it located?
According to Gabby, it's like, really low.
So at the end of Rocker, at the end of, um, First Street?
I don't know. Can't answer that. It's ten acres, so I don't think it's down there.
Even at us.
With the little information he's given us, I can't really...
Should I tell him to submit a formal request?
He's, he certainly has that right, but it would have to be, I would think at a minimum, he'd have to have a potential lot that the town owns that he's interested in, so we could at least compare apples to donuts.
Okay.
Report on the craft fair that took place. Went very well. She probably had one of the biggest fears that, uh, she's had in a long time. Were no issues. Uh, did a great job parking cars. There were no issues at all. Um, I spoke to her both Saturday on a couple of occasions and Sunday. Um, no issues whatsoever.
I, I, I drove by this morning, saw it looked pretty clean. I, I didn't go down the other end of the plains, but I would just say this board needs to do... I, I didn't go down the other end of the planes, but I would just say this board needs to do, its due diligence to come up with a free action plan for plane use, because I know she, it sounds like if it went that well, she's going to come back.
She will.
So we should have a plan. I, I think it was a great use of the planes, I sincerely do. Uh, but I think we should come up with a, um, incident action plan for, depending on the crowd of people.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I just reiterate that, I got good feedback from a couple of people on it. They were happy to see that going on, um, you know, they were pro planes usage, so.
The other issue, uh, that I looked into was the sound baffles. I haven't got the official quote yet, but somewhere between sixty and eighty thousand dollars.
For what?
Sound baffles.
Okay, sixteen or sixty?
Six, zero, eight, zero. Sixty to eighty thousand dollars.
Anything else? Okay. Public comment? This is the second go-around on the public comment for this evening? Anybody here to make a cover, a public comment? You have three minutes. Also hearing none?
No, because you make me say my name.
I didn't see the, the email from Mike Fleck.
It's not in your packet? Should be.
Was the one of mine?
I'm assuming this is Bob Griffin's?
This was concerned about the, uh, the dam on Long Pond. It was just informational?
Yeah, he called and he was suggesting they, they wanted to come in. They would tell you all about it, but it sounds kind of preliminary, so I told him I'd bring that information to you.
I don't, I don't think that's a town issue, because that's privately owned.
No, he's just saying there's a concern, because there are, I think, five residents, Kingston residents there, and it could affect their water if he doesn't maintain the dam, so.
Did you get it, Mark? Yeah.
Yeah, I see it now. And this issue's come in before and I, I think we've told them to, you know, work with the state on it and the, uh, the owner.
Yeah, Bob, Bob owns the water rights, my understanding, to, to that area, based upon, she emailed, right?
Okay. We already addressed the, uh, letter from DES. Motion on the minutes?
Making motion to approve both the public and non-public minutes from September 30th, 2019. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Anybody have anything else? All right, it looks like maybe we have one, uh, two, one, one or two updates on non-public. Nothing else, that'll conclude the televised portion of our meeting. Thank you for watching and have a good night.